Okay, good evening. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a volunteer to lead us in the pledge? Paula, you look good. You can lead us in.
Oh gee whiz. Gee whiz. Oh boy. There we go.
I actually have an assistant, my son from Cole Middle School, Justin.
They're just like you.
You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have a report out of closed session?
No.
Nothing to report? Do I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
So, second. Moved.
Mr. Ayala made the motion, Mr. Martinez seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, just for explanation, I am, uh, sitting in this seat tonight because Mr. Montes is soaking up the sun in Cabo with his family, so he will be back at the next meeting. Um, alright, now, the first item on, under open session is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, preferential vote by, well, our student board member's probably soaking up the sun somewhere too, so, okay. Uh, there are no presentations tonight. Uh, public comments. Do we have any comments for, uh, any person wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? Um, we don't have any, I don't think, 'cause I don't have any slips. Okay, any person wishing to speak on an item on the agenda, I have Mr. Russell Silva.
Good evening, board members, administration, and viewing audience. My name is Russell Silva. I have some concerns about reference item K. 1.1 through 3 on Resolution 14-15-67 authorizing temporary borrowing between funds and accounts for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. I understand transferring funds happens, between accounts happens, as a standard practice, it happens in possibly almost all public agencies to cover unanticipated shortfalls when you have things on the budget, but they're generally done within the same fiscal year, and I know that you're not transferring any funds this year, but this is written, and it appears that the district is preparing this to tran- to be able to have the opportunity to transfer funds because they're anticipating shortfalls in the next fiscal year. But why is that? I mean, a lot of people are gonna question, "Why is that? Why can't we do a budget?" Well, I understand school budgets and school funding is extremely complicated for, and many of us don't even understand it. Sometimes people that even work with it on a daily basis don't understand it completely. And it's hard, it's difficult, because school districts have to actually have approved budgets before they even know what funding they're gonna have available to them from the county and the state. So it's awfully difficult, and I understand that, and it's like putting the cart before the horse and then expecting everything to run smoothly. But what I would like to see, if, if it's possible, my request is, could a statement be added to this resolution that indicates that any funds transferred or borrowed, as it stated, does not include any bond funds, especially Measure Y funds? Because we are already falling short on those funds for improvements that we need, especially ties in Howard High School. Further, for transparency, when other, when the transfers and borrows are done in the future, is this information going to be disclosed to the public? I hope that some of these questions can be addressed in the discussion action items section of the agenda prior to approval of this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, there are no other comments on agenda items. Do we have comments from association executive board members?
Good evening, board, and Mr. Islam, other administration. Linda Silva, president of Rialto, Chapter 203. I have two things this evening. The first is that I'd like to request at the end of the meeting, if we could possibly have a moment of silence for Sharon Dickinson, Clay Dickinson's wife, who as long as I have worked in this district, and she has been at every event with him, supporting this district, doing things with the Ritz, anywhere she could help or any assistance she could give, she did. And because she is not an employee of the district, we don't recognize her through our general email system for everyone to know, so I'd like to know if we could at least take a moment to give her some respect. Her services are tomorrow evening at Truth Tabernacle in Bloomington, and we do plan on being there. Um, the second thing that I do have to do this evening is I am presenting you with the opening proposals for the 2015-16 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we, next we have public hearing. Do I have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any person wishing to speak on the items on the public hearing agenda will be granted three minutes. The public hearing states, pursuant to the requ- pursuant to the requirements of governmental code and board policy, the initial 2015-2016 proposal submitted by Rialto Unified School District for an agreement between the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education and Rialto Education Association, REA, is hereby posted in compliance with the legislative requirements for public notice. Do I have a, uh, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, consent calendar items. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by the Board of Education members or the interim superintendent for individual action. Do I have a motion to approve consent calendar items, uh, E. through J?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I have discussion on G. 7 and G. 9.
Proper protocol would dictate you hand the gavel to the clerk so you can discuss it.
Oh.
Very good.
Okay. Oh, you want the other part in case you have to?
Don't hit your cellphone.
Alright, does anyone else have discussion? No? Okay, uh, G. 7. Uh, this is about, uh, the adoption of the Spark K. 5 Physical Education Curriculum at the district's curricular, uh, as the district's curricular program. Couple of questions. Who will be teaching physical education in the elementary school?
I would refer to, uh, Ed to respond there, and Jasmine isn't here, she's enjoying its spring break, so again, Ed is prepared to respond.
It's gonna be the elementary teachers, because they have normally taught the PE curriculum, but this will be an organized curriculum for all of them to teach.
Well, is the $215,000 just from March till the end of the year?
No, the $215,000 is to buy the curriculum for the staff development of, for the teachers too,
Okay.
and also includes some equipment.
Okay. I would, will there be a cost next year for this program, or if we're purchasing it all this year, is that?
It's all purchased. We might have to replace equipment, but it's the total cost to run the curriculum.
Great, thank you. Um, and, oh, I, well, I probably did this wrong. We, we approved everything, and then I had these polls, so now can we do a separate approval for, uh, G. 7? I'm a rookie.
Um, if you have others, it would be appropriate for you to go ahead and just, whatever we have approved, which are the, uh, consent calendar items.
Yeah, E. through J.
Just continue on.
Okay. Well, I had one other on G. 9. Uh, I'm kinda wondering, what is the main reason that all of these schools had to change their school plans mid-year? And are they gonna be losing money as, uh, due to these changes?
Linda Minor is going to answer to you, board.
Good evening, board members, and interim superintendent Islam, and audience. Uh, the question was, are they going to be losing money? That was one of the questions you had. No, the, the money allocations stay the same as per the entitlement from the state, uh, and then the, depending on the free reduced lunch count, uh, that money is divided up to the schools. And then your second question was, oh, why we were doing this mid-year? We've, um, had a practice of doing this in Rialto around this time of the year, uh, in March, and this is not a, uh, a change, this is a revision to the 14-15 school plan. Before, when we had come with, um, an approval for you, it was just for the preliminary budget. But now this is the final allocation has been, um, given to all the schools, and so this is the, uh, school plan that they've submitted for the 14-15 school year. Next year, we will be revising that. Uh, we will be looking at, um, going through the school plans earlier in the school year and bringing them to the board around October, November, sometime in there.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, thank you. Okay, so, now we're gonna approve all the consent calendar items?
If you're done with the questions, retrieve the gavel.
Okay. Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, uh, we go to discussion action items, um, Section K. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Anybody?
Let's have, I'd like to have a discussion on, on K. 1.
Okay, and I want a discussion on K. 1, too.
Okay, you wanna take these individually, okay.
Okay, so...
I'll go ahead and start then. That's okay with you?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so K. 1, I'm thinking, uh, we heard bond funds. Uh, we do have an oversight committee, uh, who is looking at the way money is being spent. So if indeed we are looking to temporarily borrow from different accounts, uh, Mohammed, is this one account that we are considering, the bond funds?
Can I just explain the whole thing?
Sure, sure.
Then I'll come back to you and answer what you just asked me.
Okay.
So, instead of answering what you asked me, I can give you an answer, no. But the fact of the matter, this is a standard, um, school districts, yes, you recall many years back, we have a deferral, governors deferring our money, this year money paying next year. This is a cash. We, we have to meet our obligations, our payroll, our vendor paying their bills, and we have business to run. So governor gave us, um, to the deferral process, we have to find, borrow money, internal and external borrowing. Many of you know, you, we did TRAM, uh, temporary borrowing from our, you know, our external, and we did minimize the borrowing from external to the cost. We say, let's find what we can do, internal borrowing within our funds. Um, the fact of the matter, as you know, to the local control funding formula, gave us more money, governance plan not, no more deferral. And we have not borrowed this year. We have not borrowed, no borrowing, internal or external, due to the fact, we have, we, governors are funding our programs, how it should be funding all these years. So it, that kind of an coming to an end, but we still don't know the may revised governance plan for next year.
Uncertainties.
That is still unclear, whether he will have any type of deferral for 15-16. This is like a placeholder in case. So going back to you, is the district planning to borrow from the bond money? Although the bond, the, uh, legality of the bond, Prop. 39 bond, allow you to borrow, do we plan? I don't think so. We're not going to borrow money from bond money to, to defer our projects, you know? And, um, we can borrow from other fund, even though bond money is also called internal borrowing, you can borrow, as long as you borrow and you pay back. But, uh, we know this happened before my time. I can speak here without, uh, but, uh, generally you don't borrow from bond money, because bond money has a special purpose. You don't use money to for, pay your bill, your operating expenses. You don't do that. That's a good business practice.
Question, Mohammed. In the event, an emergency, that you had to borrow, you still have an oversight committee that you would have to get permission from first, correct?
You, you can do that if you have to go there, yes, you, you discuss with the-
Cause that would be respectful, and it seems like that would be the protocol. If you, we had a dire, uh, emergency, that we would take it to the, uh, oversight committee.
Right.
So that way, they can rest comfortable that they're not gonna be tapped into overnight when no one's looking, so.
You're correct. They should be informed, in, in the event there's an emergency, you can borrow from the county, county, county government, who oversight our, our, our cash investment. They give you temporary borrowing before you go, external borrowing, if you need emergency fund. But, um, again, this isn't simply a placeholder. I don't believe it's gonna happen. Uh, we, it didn't happen this year. And with the local control funding formula, we know we, we receive more funding, and our fund is coming on time. So therefore, there's no reason to have a deferral happen again. But again, county, our county school advised us to keep it as a, as a placeholder, simply a placeholder.
Question.
Uh, yeah.
How long do we have to pay that back? Is that the same fiscal year?
It's the same fiscal year with interest.
Yes.
And the interest of going rate, not the interest. You, you, we cannot choose the interest. The money is sitting in the bank, the county pool, investment pool, was interested, money can earn, we have to pay back.
I wanted to make sure the public could hear the whole story.
Yes, and we have done that. We have done that. We pay back with the interest, the interest money could earn.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have quite a bit to say about, uh, this situation, because I know in the past, uh, before I was on the board, I guess, there was borrowing from Measure Y. And I'm saying that this resolution, if approved, will allow temporary inter-fund borrowing, because of the way it's worded, between all, between all funds and accounts for the 2015-16 school year. This would include Measure Y, the way it's worded. We cannot approve it as it's written, because that would include the Measure Y funds. Bond funds cannot be loaned to the general fund to pay operational expenses. Bonds are issued to construct and repair school facilities. The bonds were approved by the voters to raise money for the purposes authorized by the voters. The most significant reason that the borrowing of bond funds is prohibited is that the purpose of the, um, election was to issue general obligation bonds for the acquisition and improvement of real property, repair of school facilities, and the furnishing and equipment needed for these facilities. It is solely for these purposes, um, that the Constitution, Prop. 39, allows the district to levy a tax. You cannot levy a tax to support an inter-fund loan. The temporary borrowing provisions of the ED Code, cause it's allowed in the education code, but they are trumped by the const- the provisions of the Constitution, and those sections do not cover bond funds. Bond money must be kept separate and distinct from all other district and county funds, and must be used solely for authorized purposes. So, the wording of this resolution is unacceptable as it is, cause it says all funds. And that would include Measure Y.
This pretty much standard language, and if board choose to, uh, just modify, we can say, accept bond fund, we can do that.
I would like to-
If that's, that's, I think that's, that's doable.
I'd like to make their amendment that we go to school.
Yeah, we can add, you know, accept the bond fund.
Excluding bond funds.
Excluding bond fund, we can do that.
Yes.
If that's, if you're comfortable, we can do that.
I need a second on that, but.
I'll give you a second, I'll give you a second to change the wording.
Okay, all in favor of changing the wording?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and I also had a bit, a question that Mr. Silva had, and you kind of answered it by saying, "We have not had to do any borrowing this year." I was wondering why we would have to, if, since the state is paying us on time now, and we also have additional monies through, uh, the LCFF, why would we even need to consider inter-fund borrowing?
As, as I stated, this was recommended by the county superintendent of schools, uh, in ca- in case, you know? We're talking about 15-16 school year, next school year. So this is just a, a standard, um, advise, county school provide to every school district, so in case, so you don't jeopardize you paying your employee on time, you don't jeopardize you paying your bill on time. So you have a, without board, your approval, we cannot borrow or move, uh, any, any type of, um, transfers within the fund. So it's required under the education code that your pre-approval, so it's simply, and again, I say it's a placeholder, but we, I honestly believe it's not gonna happen.
So my question was, um, just on, uh, mostly your questions, my question's actually been, I asked and answered. Um, but I did wanna make sure that if the event that we do have to go into borrowing, that we actually, that be brought to the board, so that we at least know that it's happening. We're already approving the transit, I mean, approving the, the activity, but can we know when it's, when we get into that state where we have to do that?
Yes, we can. The, the challenge is, you know, waiting for your, uh, meeting, we will not be meeting other obligations, so we, immediately we can inform you that we're gonna borrow, and that this is how we're gonna borrow. That can be done.
But if we have to wait for your board meeting date, we will not be meeting our, other, other obligation
within, within timeline. Example, payroll. There's a, you know, we pay employee on a certain date. So our board meeting is twice a month, so you, you're, what you're asking for, yes, we can do that.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Question.
Good evening, can I, can I interrupt?
Well, typically, you have to speak during public comment.
No, this is, this is dynamo, our objective fiscal.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Diane Roma, I'm the director for Fiscal Services, and I just wanted to add some information to clarify why we're doing this item. The reason is, our Child Development Fund, our first five program, is on a reimbursement basis. So they give us an advance in September, but that advance doesn't cover payroll all the way through January, when they start to process our monthly reimbursements. So we have had to borrow money from the general fund to the Child Development Fund to cover payroll. So in order for us to do that, we need to have this board item. So, um, we will more than gladly provide you an advance notice when we do anticipate, um, doing the transfer, cause we forecast, and so we're able to tell, in this month, we're gonna run out of cash, and we're gonna need to do an inter-fund borrowing from general fund to Fund 12. So that's the primary purpose.
And, thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
I, I lose that side, and may I share this with the board? As you know, Child Development Program is a reimbursement, it's a grant program. Unlike any other grant, you spend the money, then you get reimbursed. But our obligations, we can wait for, uh, cash, or to, to be in the bank, to pay our employee and pay our bills. So, uh, that's kind of how the, the grant program works, you know? And Child Development Program, which is one of our, our big program, are reimbursable program. We, we spend money, then they reimburse us. Every, every, every month, we, we report this to the state. So sometimes, um, again, you know, reimbursement, by the time we receive the cash in the bank, it's not meeting our timeline, you know, it's all, you know, after the fact. And that's another reason we have to do this.
I have two questions for Diane. Um, one is, what timeline are we running, or I guess, what is the state running to reimburse us? At one point, it, it was anticipated up to 18 months or so.
We do a monthly, a monthly claim, and it's usually about six to eight weeks before we get the check.
They've gotten much better. And this is just kind of toss-up, I'm not sure which one of you would know off the top of your head, possibly Diane. Um, at one point, we were 85% or so, even up to 91%, um, for employee salaries, for staff salaries. With the change to the local control funding formula, the LCFF, for the public, um, what has that percentage gone to?
We're about 88%.
Okay.
Um, because most, there's a shift in how we have to invest our funds. So more is going into the non-payroll, so we're at 88, but it's still a high percentage, and our, our monthly cash obligation is still significant.
Okay, okay, so it's changed slightly.
Slightly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Again, the, the borrowing is primarily for, uh, cash.
For salaries.
Salaries, and paying our, our other obligations to the, uh, vendors to run our program. So our Child Development Program is, is, is a, is a, is a unique situation right now, because of how we get funded. Um, because they are not advancing you money. Unlike your general fund, we get advanced support shipment. We're getting money in, in every month on a scheduled date. Child Development is a reimbursement in rear. After you spend the money, you claim, find a claim every month, then they reimburse you. So, but we can wait for that reimbursement to pay our employee and pay our vendor. And definitely, Mr. Walker, your request is, uh, you know, we can provide that information to you. But we're gonna wait, uh, for your formal approval, that's why we need a pre-approval, to meet our obligation on time, then we can keep you informed when, how we're borrowing this money, and why.
Right, no, I understand, as long as we've got the approval, just that when it happens, if we should have to do that, just let us know when it's happening.
Oh, yes, that's, that's not if, that's should.
Okay.
And we pay back with interest, so that interest comes out of the general fund, correct?
Yes, you, you know, unlike the deferral, I'm, I was referring to the money state not paying us, and we borrow from, um, any other fund, example, bond fund. Bond money is set aside for the project, for a special purpose. So when you borrow money, you, you remove the cash from the investment pool, pay your bill for general fund, which is not the purpose of bond money. So when we return the money, duration of the time, we compute, if the money was sitting in the bank, uh, in the investment pool, how much interest it earned, we compute the interest, and, and we, when you pay back, we pay with interest.
Well, I know when I came on the board, we were spending, probably, it was up in the hundreds of thousands, if not higher, on interest, on the money we had borrowed with all this borrowing and whatever. This is what I do not want to see happen again.
And we don't believe it's gonna happen again with, with the governor's plan, with the local control funding formula, and, uh, that's, you heard me saying, we are not going to borrow at that large scale. That is a TRAM you're referring to, Mr. Silva.
Right.
Mr. Cali, TRAM costs money. It's a large amount, we borrow. Uh, we borrowed, uh, about close to, uh, I think, $30 million. And it was like, uh, every dollar, we're getting 60 cents per dollar from the state, and 40 cents being deferral. So we have to borrow money to continue to pay our bills and meet our obligation.
And that was triggered borrowing because of state, um, finance?
Their, their financial conditions, the state, uh, yes.
I just wanted the public to be clear.
Yes, it's not, we choose to borrow, it is, they, they place us in that situations. And, uh, interestingly, you need to know this, the borrowing costs money, is state reimbursing that cost, no. So not only we're borrowing, the cost also become a, your district general fund cost. State do not reimburse, that being, being a challenge, we, we, school district, we are pressing to the state, that it, it's like, you force us to borrow.
How, how did they expect school districts to survive, having to pay that kind of interest on that kind of money?
They've been silent on that issue, and we are, we are working, uh, educational community is working on that issue. It's like, uh, some of you remember especially that mandated settlement. It took 10 years to get settled. We finally did get settled, state had to pay us back. This issue is, 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 we're putting on, on, on the list. State has not, um, they've been silent on this.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, um, discussion action item number one? Um, adopt Resolution Number 14-15-67 authorizing temporary inter-fund borrowing between all funds and accounts for the 2015-2016 fiscal year.
But we're, but we're changing the wording, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so we want to approve it as amended.
I will do that.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and number two, approve the revised Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2015-2016- the 2015-2016 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the reason we amended the calendar for next year is that the March...one of the March meetings wound up being during spring break again, and people, as you can see, people are...everybody's on vacation. Okay, and now we go to...oops, let me turn the page. Comments?
You got the...
Oh, no, I forgot.
Number three.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the Administrative Hearing Panel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have comments from the interim superintendent.
Thank you, Vice President Mrs. O'Kelly. As you can see, I think we're all, everybody enjoying spring break. I will be taking two days to spend time with my two daughters, who's in a home, and they're going back to their school on weekend. Again, you know college is a spring break one week, although our spring break is two weeks. So, I just to let you know that I will not be, I'll be available for you, but I'm not be at work tomorrow and Friday. I hope you don't mind for that. Next event, we have Rialto High School holding its College Carrier Day on Thursday, April 2nd, at 11:00 a.m. If you can put a, save that date on your calendar, if you're available, I'd like to see you there, if you can. Another event, we have our county school selected our staff Ricardo Carlos as their employee, classified employee of the year as a finalist. I think he's here. Congratulations. And the event, the County School Board, it will be happening on April 6th, which is Monday, at the County School Board Meeting at 3:30 p.m. If you could make it there, I'd like to see you there, and I'll be there. Thank you.
Please email that information to the board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now we have comments from board members. Let's start with Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Vice President O'Kelly. I have a request that we dedicate this meeting to the memory of Mrs. Sharon Dickinson and the wife of electronic technician Clay Dickinson. Thank you for bringing that up, President Silva. I'd like to apologize that we're holding the meeting during spring break. We should have had the foresight a year ago to change the meeting schedule, but as you see, we're working on it currently, so we won't have the problem, the issue, next year. A news release from the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, congratulations to Board Member Dina Walker and Ed De Souza on their nomination. Rialto Unified School District, Dr. Edward De Souza has been nominated for Excellence in Education and Education Professional. San Bernardino City Unified School District has nominated Rialto Unified School District Board Member Dina Walker for volunteer in action as a service group. Congratulations, Ms. Walker.
And this is for the National Medal of Honor, right?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations. We have so much to be proud of.
Absolutely. The board has two main duties, student achievement and fiscal budgeting or oversight. You hear me talk about student achievement component quite often. Tonight, I have a concern, a fiscal concern. The going rate for our attorney fees is $250 per hour. We pay less when a secretary or a clerk does the work, and we should, just as any other legal fees would go. We have the option to use Atkinson, Andelson, Lloyd, Rudd, and Romo. This firm is highly regarded and does work for many of the school districts within the county and within California. Through our contract with them, we get a rate of $140 per hour, a savings of $110. They have many attorneys that specialize in specific areas of law that Rialto Unified School District is contracting with other firms at $250 an hour. I suggest that the board negotiates, so the board pays no more than $140 to any attorney firm. Again, a savings of $110 per hour. That is my request and suggestion to the board. If you have concerns, the public, all stakeholders, please contact board members. To follow up, second year recognition is posted on the website for the attorney firm, A A L R R dot com. That is initials of Atkinson, Andelson, Lloyd, Rudd, and Romo dot com. November 10th, 2014, U.S. News and World Report concerning best lawyers, again, for the second year, recognizes A A L R R as a best law firm. So, when we're spending $250 and could be spending $140, it's a fiscal concern of mine. Finally, something that I've overlooked far too often, the student art to my left and to my right. I came in a little early today and took a couple of pictures, sometimes I do. Just love the kids' art. If you have a chance, come browse it. I'd like to thank Werner Elementary School for this art, and that's a K-team. There's also display cases in the hallway that I ask you to look at, and follow your school, your favorite schools or your competition. I always look at it, I always appreciate it, and unfortunately, I've been quiet for so long about it. Thank you to all, especially the students, for participating. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, and I'd like to say I agree with your suggestion about lawyer fees, and could we place that on the agenda, closed session agenda?
Yes, we can, but I'd like to clarify this respectfully. I believe their fee is $240, not $140. So, I'd like to clarify this, you know.
Please.
I would do that, you know, but I recall, they're part of the IPC, Illinois Pressing Commissions. They have been selected by the county schools to represent any member of the IPC. They have a fee scheduled beginning July 2015, increased rate of $250. I pulled their contract to review myself, see how far our attorney, how do they align with the fee with the other attorney we used to have. So, and I'd like to bring the report to you, board, and I can send you in writing, where is our attorney fees, their rate, scale, they have a scale, because they have a parallel, they have a partner, they have different attorney engaged in different event, so I can provide you a detailed report. I'd like to do that. That will at least bring the matter clear to you as a board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would love to be wrong on that one.
No, and I will clarify, I'll verify, make sure I'm not incorrect. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ayala.
Well, thank you.
As long as it's not another bad story about Algebra I.
Okay. Student achievement is a topic that draws my interest, and, you know, I keep thinking that, you know, anytime we can get more tutors, what a benefit for our district and our kids. So, we can't stop pursuing that issue. I hang around my own grandkids, and they hang around me, and I see the need for tutoring. And I also see a need for, you know, helping them to find their passions, and I keep talking about this. Their passions evolve from what they're good at, so you got to find out what they're good at, you know. It's not going to work, say they like something, if they're not good at it, so it goes hand in hand. But when you find out what they're good at, now you can start maybe changing the way you approach the teaching methodology. And, you know, I know we have a tough job here, because many times our hands are tied, and, you know, we have to meet requirements by the state. So, you know, typically, educational leaders are mostly interested in the three Rs and meeting those standards. However, in order to meet the needs of all kids, we still need to be more creative. As an example, do we help them to survive in the real world? How do we do that? If we want our kids, when they graduate, to stay within our reach and not move away, it makes sense to help create opportunities, and it's more than the three Rs. Now, just give you an example. If you're in cheerleading, those ribbons that those girls wear, those are $50. A ribbon is 50...that's what they buy them for. I know, because we're shelling out to buy our grandkids those ribbons. They look cute, but they're labeled Europe, imported from Europe, so they...it's a status symbol for them. But at the same time, they can go on Alibaba. It's a supplier website. They can buy those ribbons by the container for 15 cents and distribute them to all the schools. Now, there are people out there who are not going to like that, because now you're dealing with business. See? I've run into this wall many times, okay? But at whose expense? At the expense of our kids. So, I'm going to get off the soapbox here, and I'm going to say, the question is, can we both meet the educational requirements of our kids while at the same time finding ways to be more creative and actually meeting the needs of those kids who are in dire need of finding ways to connect to our school system? I think we can do that for them, but we have to be on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Ms. Walker, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you. You're taking his place.
I didn't say "missed."
Oh, there you go. All right. Good evening to everyone, and I'm just thankful for those of you who did stick it out and say, "I'm coming to board meeting. I'm excited." So, I'm going to do this in less than two minutes. First of all, I just came back from the National School Board Association Conference in Nashville, and it was a wonderful conference. I learned so much information, gathered contacts and everything like that, and just really excited about the information on a national scale that actually is things that we can do here in California, and we are doing, and then things that are particular to Rialto and ideas and everything like that. And so, that was really exciting for me and some new learning. And I also have my new board book that cost a lot of money, that I was thinking, "Oh, my God, this is so thin. There must be a lot of knowledge in here." So, so I'll be reading that for over the next couple of weeks, just to, you know, get more versed as my peers here on board governance. So, but really excited. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that and to be able to share and kind of, you know, my own personal and professional development for this position. The next thing is that before we went on, before I went to the conference, we had a meeting with the city of Rialto just about, talking about what partnerships could be possible between the city and the district. And I just want to say, we had a really good meeting about all the opportunities, and a lot of things we didn't even know. I mean, I personally didn't even know that the Rialto, the city of Rialto, was doing in partnership with the district and opportunities that we could possibly in the future partner. So, I look forward to those meetings that we'll have again to, for that partnership. Great school districts partner across the nation. It is now best practice that they partner with the city, because they're all the same residents. So, as we look at what we want to do better in our own district, making sure that we're looking not only to our city government, but our other community partners and business partners as well, because I think that's how we build our own capacity to be a great district. Last thing, spring break. We need to offer some after-school, be spring break school or something for kids who are out of school, because that two weeks is heavy. And my mother, who watches my six-year-old, was saying after about four days, "Hey, I need some relief." I had to call all over the place to find a program for her to get into, to relieve grandma, even a half a day. So, just this is my own personal thing, but often laws are built by somebody's personal need, right? But if we can look at, and if I don't know what's happening in the district around spring break, what activities that we have for families, I know it probably would be a great help, even if it's half a day, to look at what opportunities to continue that learning for kids during that time. Two weeks is a long time for a kid to be out, especially when they are highly energetic.
This is our last year of two weeks.
Oh, okay. We're going to one. Okay, grandma might still live. Okay. You guys enjoy the rest of your spring break, what's left of it, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for coming tonight, especially during spring break, but I hope everybody's enjoying their spring break. On Facebook, everybody looks like they are, so everybody's off somewhere doing something. And there haven't been any school events to attend, because the kids are out, so I haven't had a lot of exciting things to do the last couple of weeks. But we certainly have a lot of events coming up. This last quarter is the killer, because we have all kinds of things culminating with all the graduations and everything else, and it's very exciting, but very busy. Someone posted this on Facebook the other day, and I just loved it, and I wanted to share it, so I...this is a quote by the wonderful and late Maya Angelou, and she said, and I quote, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Very, very thought-provoking. I love that, so I just wanted to share that with you. And I'd like to close the meeting tonight with a moment of silence for Mrs. Sharon Dickinson. She passed away Sunday morning. Her service is tomorrow evening at 7:30, and she had a very, very long, long battle with cancer. So, moment of silence. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned at 7:49, guys. This is a record.